Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our July 6, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business will stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the agenda. First item we have to talk about is our Small Cities Revolving Loan Fund. Good to see you from Mapleton. Come on up. Right up here.
Right up here.
Good morning, John and Amber from Mapleton to talk about a Small Cities Loan.
Yes.
Nice to see you in person again.
Yes, you guys too. You guys too.
Welcome. So tell us a little bit about what you've got going on here.
Alright, so we have a Small City Revolving Loan Application for the amount of $64,500 and it's to Brandon Wendlin. His company is Wendlin Seed. This one is kind of nice because it's a succession and expansion of our current business in town. And so we always like to see that and try to assist them when we can. I'll tell you, I know that we've got at least two other businesses in town right now that are working through their succession plans. So that's really exciting to see that there is opportunity for younger individuals to come in and take over an existing business in town. And I'm pretty sure one of those will have a Small City Loan Program application coming out probably before the end of this year. So we're pretty excited about being able to have those opportunities in Mapleton. And that, to me, is from a county and a city standpoint, it seems to me like that's going to be something that is going to be coming up more often than not in the next 20 years. I think we're going to have a lot of, you know, those individuals that started businesses 40 years ago that are going to be looking for, you know, that next individual, whether it's an employee of theirs or somebody else just coming in and moving into the city and growing that business, continuing that business, expanding it for the city. So we're excited about that. And that's something that, from a city's perspective and our rural entrepreneur venture grant group, that we're looking at that pretty hard, succession planning of existing businesses in town. So we're excited that this is one of those. Brandon has been working with our CEF for probably the last year at least on getting his business plan put together and everything. So that's been really great that he's spent all that time. We've met with him on several occasions, very driven individual, knows his business very well. So we're very excited. And he's been working with the business owner that he's taking over. He's been working with him for a few years already. So he's kind of got that, built up that client base already and that, you know, I guess rapport with those clients. And so we're excited about that. EDA is now with them. EDA has recommended to the city council to accept this loan program, or this loan. And tonight, our city council meeting is tonight. And so we will be hearing this and then hopefully approving it tonight. And so we're asking for the county to go ahead and approve on contingent that the city would approve it as well. And yeah, Amber, did I miss anything else? I guess with that, are there any questions? Sorry, I went on and on.
No, that's good. Any questions from the board?
No, that sounds exciting.
Yeah.
That's awesome. For a small town, it could be in this day and age, you want that.
Anytime we get a new business in town, it's exciting for us. I mean, we, during the pandemic, we had two businesses for sure open up on Main Street.
Nice.
And floral and a floral shop and an embroidery shop. So we're very excited about that. We've got two buildings that were basically being unused on Main Street that are now open for business. So it's exciting.
Make a motion contingent on Mapleton's vote tonight. Second?
Got a first and a second. Is there any other discussion or comments?
I would just add, Mayor Hollerick talked about 40 years ago, I can remember going to Wendlin Seed in my neighborhood, and that was over 50 years ago with my dad. And that sort of comes from a long history of seed sales and caring for customers and stuff like this. It'll be not only good for your community, but for our entire county. So thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just think when you can grow your own, it makes a huge difference, doesn't it? I think that's how we really do economic development well in many of our communities. It's growing our own as opposed to smokestack chasing.
Yes, yes, 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same comment I was going to make. We gotta remember to keep our businesses that have been around for 30, 40 years in check. Make sure you can help them out as best you can. Seems like we're always so busy about getting somebody new in town. And it's the same when you're in business. I realize every now and then it's like, I don't need any more new customers. I just got to take care of the customers I already have, you know? So at some point, we just have to acknowledge that. And it's like, I appreciate you guys doing that. So Mark, I think?
It's exciting, yeah, because knowing the family and Brandon, I just know I'm getting older, but they're, he'll do a good, he'll do a good job.
Yes.
Alright, I got a motion and a second for the loan application, accepting it if they approve it tonight at the meeting at the city. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Nice seeing you all again.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Public Works, Mr. Dildes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan. How was your forest?
Oh, it was good.
Going down to Okavango?
We were down with family, yes, down at the lakes. Confined space with wife, three kids and a dog. Glad to be home.
Looks like you had several items for us to discuss this morning, so.
Yeah, we've got three action items for consideration and lots of updates on projects as things are flying along. The first action item for consideration is consideration of final payment for state aid project 007-601-021, Wichita County State Aid Highway 1. In Good Thunder, Dirt Merchant Incorporated was the contractor. Original contract amount $999,355. Total amount paid to date, or total work certified to date, $1,062,447.36 for a final payment amount of $10,624.47. I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to do the final. Any discussion?
Just a comment. They did a street by my house and spent a lot of time at it over by the park, up on Highland Park. Dirt Merchant was part of that. Yeah, so it's just kind of interesting because I hadn't seen them physically work like every day for, you know, a month and a half or something. So, yeah. They were a sub, I'm sure, subcontractor.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the final payment.
Alright, thank you. Action item number two, consider final payment for state aid project 007-610-25, Thisis County State Aid Highway 10 from the Blueworth River to Cassaw 1. Mathewitz Construction Company, original contract amount $4,554,361.11. Total work certified to date, $4,940,783.22. Final contract payment amount, $71,182.88. I would recommend approval of this.
Also move.
Got a first from Mark, got a second. Second from Kevin. Any discussion? Questions or comments?
Time, it's good.
Getting wrapped up. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the other final payment.
Action item number three, consideration of a city of Mankato Cooperative Construction Agreement for State Aid Project 007-612-024. That's for the roundabout at the intersection of County State Aid Highway 12 and Adam Street, so between US Highway 14 and County Road 17. This cooperative agreement is very, very similar to the other cooperative construction agreements we've approved in the past. On the last page of the cooperative construction agreement is a revised schedule I detailing the county and city cost participation breakdowns as the project has evolved from original design to revised design to as bid prices. The county's total project cost share is $790,015.22. The city does apply a $242,795 deduction from their TED grant that was received pro-rating the county's cost share. So the total anticipated county out-of-pocket cost is $547,220.22. That does include 10% contingencies as well as admin and bonding costs, I'm sorry, as well as engineering costs. They do not have the admin and bonding costs in there as part of this agreement. And this agreement does include repayment schedule that I believe is over the next four years is broken out.
Okay.
So we can easily cover that with our program construction dollars and budget board accordingly because we didn't have it in the CIP for this year. So I would recommend approval of that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion, questions?
Well, with the construction going along there and at that area, this roundabout is duly needed. It's going to be a little bit more expensive than what it originally was thought about, but I think we know that this interchange area needs to be done along with the new truck stop that's going in, along with new truck dealership that's going in on Adam Street. Yeah, we need to have this done. Do you know when they're talking about starting construction?
I think they were anticipating late July start was the last I had heard. They were wanting some things to wrap up at the truck stop to control the in and out some of the traffic because it needs to get to the site.
Okay.
What's proposed completion date?
I don't have that on me. I'd be speculating. I'd say it's September.
Guess we need a second.
I think the agreement does indicate a September 15 completion.
September 15?
Yeah. I'm not sure. Yeah, I just wasn't sure. They slid back a little bit to facilitate a little bit of the site.
I know they're doing Warren Street and they're closing my section now and they're saying October weather permitting, which makes me a little nervous.
We always have to throw that in there.
Well, yeah, this is going to be frustrating for people that are traveling trying to get around now with 27 and 60 closed. Now you're closing 12. Now if you want to go to Madison or come back from Madison Lake, you gotta go all the way to 12. Now you're gonna have to go all the way to 22 unless you want to take some of the gravel roads that we don't recommend people cut across on. So this is going to be a long end of the summer.
It is.
But it'll be nice when it's all done. We won't have to deal with it for the next 50 years. So any other questions or comments? I got a motion and a second.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, clean second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
You're so quiet.
Information items, project updates. The County State Aid Highway 41 Bridge Replacement Project, work has been completed. The road is open to traffic. There is some minor corrective work and punch list items that will remain that'll be taking place over the course of the next month or so, just depending on the contractor's schedule. The County State Aid Highway 16 Trail from Stadium to Pleasant Street is completed and has been open to traffic. Every time I drive by, I see people on it. So that's a good sign that we put it in the right spot and it's going to get used.
And the fence is nice.
Yes, the decorative fence is very nice. The County State Highway 27 Reconstruction Project from Minnesota Highway 14 to Cassaw 2, work is progressing very well. The reclaim section, which is basically Highway 14 up to County Road 187, is effectively ready for the road and the gravel base to be reclaimed. The contractor's just been waiting to finish hauling loads to the north. They're still working on excavating the second pond just northwest of the cemetery and spotting those loads where they need them on the northern three-grade piece. So that's actually nearing completion. That's shaped up fairly nicely. They're just finally balancing and kind of getting that put back together, which is good now that we're starting to get a little bit of rain. If we can get that covered with gravel, getting people in and out is, we're pretty lucky throughout the life of the project up until that four-inch rainfall. And then it got pretty difficult to get people in and out. But that's part of a reconstruction project. County State Highway 27 in Eagle Lake, the reconstruction project, Phase 1, which is from Linda Drive to County Road 17, the utilities, main lines are in. Services in aggregate base will follow this in probably the following week. And then they're going to also start right after that Phase 2, which is the southern piece, Thomas Drive to Linda Drive, and that'll be utilities followed by gravel base and then curb.
So to Linda, they're done with the sewer and the water?
Linda to 17.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sewer main line ran and then they're gonna gravel it in.
It looks like they must have dug it up, put the sewer in, and then they must pack it, and then they dig it up again and put the water in.
Yeah, that dirt doesn't know which way is up by the time the project's done. And then they have to put the services into each home, sewer and water services.
So it gets, they've been working pretty hard on it.
They've done a good job coordinating with the people along the project, really varying minimal complaints. The onsite representative from Bolton Mink's been good communicating with staff and residents. And then the contractor's done a nice job as well. That's also Dirt Merchant Incorporated who we've got working on several other projects. Cassaw 57, the roundabouts at US Highway 14, which is WW Blacktop, all the curb work has been completed for both roundabouts. And the crews are actually preparing to pave possibly at the end of this week, start beginning paving, which is great. We're ahead of schedule. It's going right along. I have to throw an asterisk out there, you know, we always say weather dependent, but the other thing that now is giving us some heartburn is the light poles because they are on, they're not behind schedule, but they're on schedule, which means there may be a delay between the pavement being completed and us actually getting the light poles to open the intersection. So if anything, we'll probably hold off on striping the roundabouts just to, you know, you know how it is when people see that they're striping and.
There's blacktop there. Doesn't matter about the striping. When the blacktop's there, we should be open.
So without lights though on a roundabout, I get some heartburn about that. I agree. It's going to be really hard to keep people out of there. So we're actually following through, talking to the suppliers right now and trying to get a definitive schedule for the lights. That'll be a critical path for us to get that open early. But we've done a really nice job with that. It's gone well.
What was the opening date anyways on that?
It was.
Late September?
Very early September, early August. Yeah, we were just starting to try to get it open before school starts.
Should be alright.
Yeah. I'd just hate to have it done three weeks early and then it sits there. We're a little bit, light poles and signal poles are always a critical path item that, you know, a lot of times if you get them on time, you're lucky, it's like.
That's awesome.
With the lead time. 82 from Stadium to Hoffman, all removals and crushing operations have been completed. The northern third of the project has been paved. Contractor's working on the remaining storm sewer at the intersection with Bolsters Act. And then they'll begin putting that back together and prepping it for paving. So that goes on or ahead of schedule as well. So that's also Dirt Merchant Incorporated.
What's the estimate time?
Again, it was that end of August, early September timeline. That and the interchange with Highway 14 on 57 were on parallel timelines.
Okay.
We know that's very disruptive one, two to Mankato, but it seems like.
Well, at least the roundabout at Victory and Stadium's open. So, I mean, you can go through that area and get to 22 and stuff.
It's a really nice, you've got lots of access because you can come up Glenwood too and go straight out.
Oh, yeah.
The three-way stop at Glenwood and Pole has been working pretty good, I think, as far as getting people through there and making it safe and letting people get out of Pole onto Glenwood.
It'll be nice when it's done. But that's, it's so needed and they have a nice trail there and that's going to be awesome.
County State Highway 1 from 9 to 90, the last piece of the turnback project. Mathewitz plans to begin work in mid-July. We're anticipating to have a pre-construction meeting coming up in the following weeks. And with that, we'll get a more definitive schedule. But we think they're going to, based on preliminary conversations, they're going to begin work on the soil nail walls, which will be primarily in the chute and along the river. So then part of it, they'll be generating some soil from that operation. They'll have to go somewhere with it. So we're trying to get them to tie in the southern piece yet this year, if at all possible, get that reconstructed and on its new alignment so that that piece is done. So that while it's all under construction next year, people could get to 9, which would lead them to 33 and 34 to get into Mankato. So that's what we're gonna, gonna ask them to do at the pre-construction meeting. Now, if they have a dramatically different plan, I guess we'll just see how those will coordinate accordingly. The Batumus overlays, all the work has been completed. Bridge replacement projects, County 7, we're going to begin advertisement this week for August 4 of bid lending and an August 10 for consideration. So we want to try to get that bridge replaced yet this year. Now there, that's pending material availability for the beams and some of the other bridge elements and the structural steel. But we want to do that to decrease the detour length next year on County Road 7 project. We're concerned that if we have them both out of commission, it's a pretty lengthy detour. We know people don't follow long detours and our gravel roads are going to get abused pretty badly. So we're going to try to tackle that yet this year. 151, bridge plans are still getting updated. We're still hopeful to bid that yet for 2021 for maybe late work into the fall and winter, if not spring 2021, 2022 construction. And then Cassaw 40 and County Road 169 will both be 2022 projects. Now, County State Highway 7 in Mapleton, project design is moving from up to 75% plans. We just submitted 60% comments back to Bolton Mink for that three-lane segment road and the sidewalk that projects to the north of City Park for two blocks. So that's taking shape nicely. We are working on coordination between the city, county, school, and all the consultants at play. And that's been a little bit of a challenge, but we are going to have another meeting coming up to discuss storm sewer and using some of the school sites pond for the minimal amount of stormwater ponding we need. Hate to buy extra land and put in stormwater ponds if we don't need to.
And you've been working with them with the sidewalk? We've talked a little bit about the sidewalk and the path.
Yep. So the sidewalk will be on the west side of the road as we discussed previously because that's where the City Park is and all the other existing sidewalks.
And they're comfortable with that at this point?
Yeah, the city's been in on all of the design meetings.
Going through all that work, it might as well make it safe up to the school.
Right.
Absolutely.
Cassaw 10 and 72 in Vernon Center. We had a consultant engineer kickoff meeting with SEH, who is the city's consultant engineer. And they're going to begin some of the design work as part of their project on those roads. We are going to work on an intended cost participate agreement. So the engineering costs will be covered leading up to bidding the project. With that being said, we are planning to add or include the remaining two blocks, which I believe is Main Street and Vernon Center in front of the lumberyard and the post office, which is actually still our County State Highway 72. As part of that project, the city is going to coordinate with our participation, some outreach meetings to the businesses, the lumberyard and post office owners, that'll be impacted by that project. And as we did talk about before, right now is an extremely wide rolling section. And to get it all to fit back in there with ADA compliant sidewalks, and just from a cost standpoint, to probably looking at reducing that down. But we do need to talk again to the businesses to see what uses, what concerns they have, and how can we maybe improve the design or improve their operations or at least not impinge them. So we're going to be having some more design discussions on that project. 11 from 20 to Highway 68, the project open house meeting was held last month. It had moderate turnout. Design staff is reviewing the east end of the project, trying to reduce the impacts to the landowners because right now 68, Minnesota Highway 68 runs through, 20 comes in in quite a skew. It's a dangerous intersection. It's not a good situation. We're trying to bring that in on a 90-degree tangent. That does get into some properties. So we're trying to look at if we can maybe reduce that to maybe not complete 90-degree, but maybe 85 or 80, but still bring it in so there's good site distance so that you can see both ways oncoming traffic and increase intersection safety. And then after the additional items, Jack will be working on kind of the western two-thirds of the project for right away acquisition after the final plan is completed. Last one, Cassaw 6 Trail Study from Cassaw 20 to Lily Lake subdivision in Lake Crystal. The city of Lake Crystal has hired Bolton and Mink to develop a feasibility report for trail, including potential alignment options. There are several challenges, including right away width, a ditch crossing, the underpass under Highway 169, and railroad tracks. So they're going to take all of those into consideration. And then the plan is that we would apply for either TA or safer off the school types of grant opportunities for the trail system along Cassaw 20. So that's taking place. I know there's going to be a city council work session coming up, Land Lieutenant, and I think I invited you too, Commissioner. Maintenance activities update. Seal coating, 45 miles of paved roads is expected to begin late this week. That'll be happening kind of scattered throughout the county. Striping is scheduled to begin this week throughout the county for about a third of the county. And that'll take place over two to three mobilizations into the fall. So it'll be refreshing those paint lines. Weather pending, maintenance crews plan to replace deteriorated 58-inch steel arch pipe on Cassaw 6 next to Lieberg Lake. So they're just waiting for the new concrete pipe to show up and then they'll be replacing that pipe. They've already removed the pavement and put in a gravel patch so that they can get right to it. Crews will also begin mowing out the southern third of the county later this month. And they'll continue with other culvert tile repairs, general maintenance items. I want to kind of, especially during the summer, we've got a lot of different things happening. At least give the board a heads up of all the different tasks our maintenance crews are working on too. They've got a long laundry list of projects to take care of. working on, too. They've got a long laundry list of projects to take care of. And last item I had, included in your packet, was a letter from the Greater Parks and Trails Commission, telling us that we were successfully added as a regional destination.
That's great.
So our parks application was approved, which does make us eligible for future legacy funding.
Thanks.
Grant application. So it's another opportunity for that trail system to provide some necessary dollars.
And so.
Exciting, yeah.
And congratulations.
Yeah.
That was, that's, it's a good trail, good stuff.
For us. So we've always known we had a great system. I think this just goes to prove it. And one of the things I was really proud of was that our application was one of the highest scoring ones they've given in these applications. They said it was, I forget, probably said four hundred fifty out of five hundred points.
Wow.
And there's only been a handful that have scored that high throughout state.
I keep telling people, wherever I go, that you wanna have a good bike riding and good trail system, come down to Blue Earth County. It's got some of the best in the state of Minnesota.
So that's all I have, unless there are any other questions.
Any questions or comments for Ryan?
Nope.
Good job.
Good report, Ryan. Thank you for all your projects.
Everybody there is busy.
Public works.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks for that text back on those EV, EV units. We'll have to have some discussion about that in the future.
All right, we'll move right on into administrative with Bob. Start out with the minutes for us.
Yes, Mr. Chair. First time as county board minister for June twenty-second.
Move the minutes, Lane Cameron.
Second.
First and a second. Is there any questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
I move the bills.
Second. Got first and a second for the bills. If there are any questions that have not been answered at this point? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number five in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We've filled a number of positions, starting with the library clerk, part-time position in the library, then a property and environmental resources specialist in our taxation area, and then correctional officer in the jail, and then hired two probation officers, one working with juveniles and the other in the adult drug court position. So be happy to answer any questions the board might have on those hires.
Any questions or comments?
Yep.
Seeing none, move on.
All right. I have number six in your packet is a temporary liquor license for locale brewing company to serve beer at the Bluff Riders Charge Mountain Bike Race out at Mount Cato, and that race will be held on July twenty-fifth. And so this has been reviewed and recommended for approval.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the liquor license.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number seven in your packet is the agreement between the University of Minnesota and Blue Earth County for extension services. This is the standard memorandum of agreement between the extension service and Blue Earth County. Just updates amounts for the extension educator and the SNAP educator for 2022 through 2024. We did have some discussion with the extension staff at a recent budget meeting and reviewed some of these numbers, and actually did make some minor adjustments to the overall budget, but these numbers remain the same. And then there is an addendum to this agreement as well that includes some information related to some reevaluation of the extension educator charges to counties that allowed or created some capacity in the budget for program intern, and so that is reflected there as well.
But the bottom, the amount was the same.
Right. There is in each year about a two to two and a half percent increase.
Increase for the.
That increases over the three-year agreement, but for 2022, the overall agreement is slightly less than what we budgeted in 2021.
Okay. All right. Do you have a motion to approve, or do you want to?
Quick question. The SNAP educator, that's, that's not county-funded, correct?
Yes, it is.
It is part of this memorandum, so yes, it is part of this agreement, and we are then paying for that.
I have some concerns about this. I think it should've gone through a work session on budgets, because we are adding positions. And I'm also kind of confused why SNAP educators and extension as opposed to human services. So those are my concerns. I, I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for this eventually, but I think it should be part of our work sessions on budget.
Is there any reason why it has to be done today, or is there, we got time, it's twenty-two, so?
Right. We do have time, if that would be the preference of the board, to table this.
I'll move to table it. Second. How long do we need?
It's not debatable.
Yeah, it's not debatable.
Yeah.
We don't have a motion to table it.
We don't have a motion on the table, how do we table it? So I'll need a motion to...
Well, I guess, I want, I need a little more information, because I was under the assumption at the, at this meeting, at the extension committee meeting, that the SNAP educator was not county-funded.
Go through this.
But is it passed through, or is it?
Through this memorandum of agreement, we pay extension one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which includes both the extension educator and the SNAP educator.
My other concern is we're paying the intern more than we're paying our part-time library clerk. I've got concerns about that, too.
So, I mean, I don't think anybody is opposed to taking it to a work session, but...
You know what? We don't even need to table it, because it...
We don't, if, we don't need to table it unless we get a motion to table. So at this point, we can just leave it.
Okay, I'll take the, we'll just leave it until we come back.
That's disgusting.
Yeah.
So there will be a work session?
We can certainly add it to an upcoming work session.
I would direct, we'd bring this back to a work session for a little bit of a discussion and...
And it's 2022.
Yeah, we got, we got time.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to add, I mean, extension is such an important part of the county. It's hugely important. As, as a 4-Her growing up in, in, from in a rural county like I did, extension was the county. And it makes, you know, so this is super important. It's just that we need to get all our ducks in a row and make sure we understand what's being paid for, what isn't being paid for, and before we start voting on something. And I really appreciate Commissioner Lane Cameron bringing this up, that we need to sit and talk about this.
I, I don't have a problem pushing it, but I mean, it's something we've done for years, and Bob has always done it in the past. But some more education for us certainly went whole, hurt. Kevin and I are both on the extension committee, so we get a little more of it than, than the rest of the board. And you're right, Vance, I don't think anything will change. We will support this probably at the end of the day, and it'll happen, but it'll be fine just getting some more information.
Got it.
Thanks.
So the motion and second that we didn't vote on, is that just go away?
Yeah.
Just goes away.
I take it, I take it away.
All right.
Draw.
All right. So I will, we will see this at a work session and have some more discussion about it, and then we'll bring it back to another board meeting.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right. Anything else for the other order, other than the committee reports, Bob?
That's all I had for you, Mr. Chair.
Wow.
All right.
When you said it's gonna be short.
It's all about you.
It's all about me. Get me on the road.
Let's start with Queen today.
Okay. Just so you all know, many of you don't, Sally Gaiman, who's the commissioner for Miami-Dade, Surfside is in her district.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's been extremely challenging for Sally. Just thought I'd bring that up. It's sad for everybody, but it's tough for the commissioner that represents that district, too.
Sally was chair of public safety for years for NACO.
She's chair of luck right now.
So.
Anyway, okay, on the twenty-second, I have airport commission, just a couple dates for everybody. There's gonna be a flight breakfast on August fifteenth from seven AM to one PM, and they're applying for an airshow in twenty-three. They want the Blue Angels. It'll be June seventeenth and eighteenth in twenty-three. The council, it'll go to the council, and they have to apply. And it always takes a longer time for military, but, and we're doing the road in twenty-two, so we need everything to stay on track. City's going to have a work session on the tower on August second at the airport, in that small conference room, but you can watch it on Zoom if you want. The twenty-fourth, Kevin and I were at Township Officials, and they had someone from the township. I was a little late, because I had a ballgame with my grandkids, on the American Rescue Act plan. On the twenty-fifth, I had SHAC, State Community Health Advisory Committee. Next year, we're, you know, we're starting with COVID, not done, but a little less than it was before, talking about what we're gonna do next year, and it's all about systems change and children of incarcerated parents, kind of that, those kids that just fall through the cracks, because nobody knows about it. There will not be an in-person health conference this year. It'll be virtual in the fall. And the legislature passed some legislation saying that Health and Human Services and Minnesota Department of Health have to work together to rethink public health, delivery models and partnerships. There's going to be some pilot projects, so it's probably something we want to look into. Cheryl Crowe, who used to be a public health nurse right here, is now the central, the deputy for surveillance and control. So I just thought you might be interested in that. She, she worked here for a long time. It's called the Fourth Bureau under Minnesota Department of Health. I can't tell you what the other three are, but that's the fourth. And there wasn't a catch-up ship, so we were really happy about that, because we thought there was going to be. On the twenty-sixth, I represented the board at the Marion Anderson event in the rain, but we needed the rain, so everybody was happy to see the rain. I, I brought the brochure along. Right now, you can see many of her paintings. The Blue Earth County Historical Society has some, the Niklet County Historical Society and the Main Caved Area Foundation. So if you want to see any of those, and that's just a few of them, that's where you can find some of them. It always amazes me how extensive and her painting was in genre. I mean, it, it really is, hits them off.
Quite the artist.
She was quite gifted, and she donated all her art to the Mankato Warrior Foundation, and everybody knows how hard it is to get money for art, and this is gonna make a huge difference in art in Blue Earth and Niklet County. On the twenty-eighth, AMC had an event for Dave Bartholomew, who I think is going to be presenting at Kevin's new commissioners workshop, or you've had him a couple times. And he worked, I know him when he worked at the legislature a long, long time ago.
Great guy.
He's a really good guy, and he really does a nice job. So he's, he's retiring from the state, but he's not done, is what he said. Twenty-eighth, I have Finance and Intergovernmental Affairs. There's going to be an emergency resolution at NACO on the MSA issue, keeping it front and center. NACO is a hundred percent behind keeping it at fifty thousand, and so we'll have an emergency. Resolution, thank you. Twenty-ninth, way to work session. The thirtieth, NACO, I was on the NACO Town Hall, and then I got a call from Roger Burquist. His son, Dan, just got his Eagle Scout, and he wanted to know if there was anything the county could do to talk about that. So Jesse's gonna get back to him. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Queen.
Okay. As extensive as that, but I did see the virtual kind of tour with Highway one sixty-nine, where you got the whole corridor. I spent more time with the upper part, and of course, yeah, this is, there's a lot of alternatives. You could have it with the traditional way it is, with the roundabouts everywhere, and then with the right, right turns, you know, hard turns, and just like, so. But North Mankato, I guess, is fairly, fairly happy what would happen. We're not gonna end up with just the old stop and go lights alone. That's gonna be, probably gonna be, I don't know. I'm guessing roundabouts, but I, yeah, I don't know. And we got, yeah, I know, and we have up above, too, the cloverleaf that we're talking about with, when the two highways intersect, but we'll see. Then we did have, yeah, I missed the townships, and Kevin took care of that, and you were there. Then we had the work session on the twenty-ninth, and then Kip and I with Bob and Josh, we met on the budget with the county attorney, our favorite county attorney, and then with our sheriffs, Brad. And then I did Sunday walk a long time, and a nice hot day at the St. Peter parade for apartments, for housing. Yeah, we went north and that. There's a lot of people that go from Mankato to, to St. Peter, notice it more going home. There was a traffic jam, and then they were all getting off from Mankato. I couldn't, yeah, there's a lot. So anyway, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Kevin?
Since June twenty-second, board meeting, it's already been mentioned, township officers and work session I just had on the township officers, Blue Earth County Township officers are hosting the District Two meeting in Lake Crystal on August third, so that's coming up. I've attended the CD seventy-nine informational meeting here at the courthouse, as well as the Sauer River One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee meeting. Met with staff and others concerning ditch fifty-six in Lake Crystal, kind of an ongoing concern, upcoming. Ryan already mentioned the, the city council meeting coming up, NACO, Soil and Water, the new commissioners training, and then we'll be having a Blue Earth River Policy Board and True Advisory Meeting coming up. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Vance?
Mine is fairly short, because I had a week-long vacation in there that I took.
Nice.
Of course, during my vacation, I attended a Zoom meeting for the Highway one sixty-nine corridor, which is kind of nice. I can do it out of my camper. That was on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-ninth, we had a work session, and let's see. On the thirtieth, there was a Region Nine discussion on broadband, which was really pretty well-attended and had a lot of, a lot of people talking. It's good to get these discussions going and having people understanding what, what's going on in broadband. On the first of July, there was a government AMC webinar on the...
Legislation.
Legislation, yeah, thank you, that, that I zoomed in on. And let's see, this last weekend, myself, I know, and Commissioner Pap joined in with Jack Considine on his retirement anniversary and stuff down at the Civic Center.
I'm sure.
I thought I saw you there, too. I, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And that was kind of fun. I mean, Jack has been a strong supporter of the, the area for many, many years, and I think we all saw people that we knew that were closely associated with Jack, so. And that's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you, Vance. Other than the few meetings that have already been mentioned, the only thing that I had extra was a couple of my statewide Emergency Communication Board meetings, and some of the programs are working on them.
the programs are working on them. Uh, got a lot of things going on and that's about it, other than the ones that were already mentioned. So that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn today?
Nope.
Uh, motion to adjourn? Got a first?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you.
That's probably the shortest I can remember.